Well, convenience, the City Council moves. Roll call, please.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Luntine?
Here.
Lewis? Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Akeem.
I entertain the motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Senator. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Lewis? Morgan? Yes. O'Toole?
Yes.
We will move to reports. Mayor.
Yes, I'm happy to report that we had several great events in the last week or so. And one was the Pop-Tarts at the City Park Concert in the park. And Junk in the Trunk had nearly 50 vendors and numerous shoppers. So it was very successful. Very good weather advantage on both of these events. And also, the latest City Edition has been mailed last week or just before that. And so everyone should be, should have their City Edition. It's also available online for those who want to look at it on their iPhone or whatever. We also have put out a new resident handbook that's been completed and now is available. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to comment as we go along.
Thank you. Fire Chief Mark Newman?
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, members of council, and members of our viewing audience. The fire department has had 947 calls for service since January 1st. We're down 4.8 percent compared to the last time, our last reporting period in 2014. EMS calls are 748, which is 79 percent of the total. Our three area nursing homes account for 22 percent, or 209 calls of our total call volume. And our fire service calls are at 199, including 11 structured fires. Actually, our fire service calls are down about 19.4 percent compared to the last, or the same reporting period in 2014. Simultaneous calls, those are calls that happen at the same time, occur about 13.5 percent of the time, or about 128 of those events this year. On mutual aid, we've received mutual aid 18 times, and we've given mutual aid 49 times to our neighboring communities. Our EMS billing, our billing for EMS transport is at 322,000. We're at even when compared to the same reporting period in 2014, we were at 322,000. Our revenues for EMS transports are at 160,000. That's a decrease of 0.8 percent over the same report, reporting period in 2014, we were at 162,000. Collection rate for EMS billing is at 50 percent. In 2014, we were at 50 percent. Our supplemental staffing expenses in Division of Fire, our year-to-date overtime expenses as of June 30th was at $44,039, total of 1,078 hours. That's a decrease of 32.5 percent, or a decrease of $21,243, compared to the same reporting period in 2014. We were at about 65,000. Overtime includes shift coverage and off-duty training related to regional agreements like our Hillcrest Technical Rescue Team and our Fire Investigation Unit. The total cost of our supplemental staffing, which is overtime and part-time expenses, is at 51,090 year-to-date. In fiscal year '14, we were at 82,098, which was $31,000 more. So we've had an overall decrease in supplemental staffing expenses of 37.8 percent. We will be holding a CPR course on Monday, August 17th. And that's the Heart Saber CPR Course. We're going to have it at the Richmond Heights Fire Station from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. We do this in partnership with University Hospital Richmond Medical Center on a bi-monthly basis. We offer the courses to residents of Richmond Heights for free. If anybody is interesting, interested, anybody is interested in taking this course, please call myself, Chief Newman, at (216) 383-6304. Class size is limited to 12 students. We've had three registered so far. And this is the courses for the general public, it's not the healthcare provider course. Division of Fire will also be hosting a CPR class for the Richmond Heights Cert team at their next regular meeting on Monday, July 20th. On a side note, as it pertains to hydrant painting in the city of Richmond Heights, we do have youth opportunities unlimited, students in the city of Richmond Heights, they've been helping us out quite a bit throughout the city. However, the weather has not been cooperating for the hydrant painting activity. The Service Director and I have been working closely together on this project, and as soon as the weather cuts us a little break, they're going to get out there and paint the hydrants. We have the paint, we have the tools, we just haven't had the weather. That concludes my report, and I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Mayor Chairman?
Yes?
I was going to wait till everybody had their report, but this is for all the directors, if I may. Everyone here has been doing a great job, I want to applaud you for that. Very professional. But as a councilperson, there's times that issues come up, in particular my ward, and I'm sharing other people's wards, of an emergency of some sort or another, delay in rubbish, snow plowing, whatever. The building department has sent out letters occasionally to inform the residents of an issue that might be happening on their street. I know it's on our agenda, I know it's talked about. When something formally goes down, where a letter needs to be delivered to a surrounding street or whatever, it would be great, at least for myself, to also get that mailing, to also get the timing of when that is handed out. So when my phone rings, I could not, I could sound a little more educated with the problem and know where the residents are coming from. We had a couple just recently, I think this is what Marsha's been talking about, in part about getting legislation sold, you know, late in timing to have an educated opinion of what we're doing. We have the meetings, we have, but when there's a letter going out to the residents, include us, you know, what day that goes out, so when my phone rings, I know what the heck we're talking about. It would just be greatly appreciated, and that's for everybody. Just a general comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Commissioner, no, Police Chief, he took your time, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mayor, members of City Council. Our Part 1 crimes thus far in 2015 are three less than the same number last year, we're at 196. And again, those are major crimes, murder, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Obviously, we've had no murders, which is good. I probably shouldn't have said that. Our calls for service are, we've had 35 more this year than the same time last year. Our CAD entries are actually down from the same period of time last year. Everything else is fairly close statistic-wise. Our traffic enforcement and parking enforcement efforts are up 19.3 percent this year from the same time last year. And fines from Lynn Hurst Court are up 17 percent, or $7,268. Overtime worked is down 7.8 percent from the same period of time last year. Our mall accounts for 5.8 percent of our calls for service, 17 percent of our arrests. Our three major apartment complexes account for 19.1 percent of our calls for service. This past, or Wednesday, July 8th, our department conducted an active shooter exercise at the high school. We always like to take advantage of that during the summer when the school is empty. And our span group will also be doing an exercise this Sunday at the mall from 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock. And it'll, it's a joint exercise between, involving the bomb squad, the SWAT team, and the crisis intervention unit. Also, yesterday, I received a call from a resident that complained about a number of streetlights out on Highland Road in the area of Trubisky. So I had the night shift check it. They counted 11 lights that were out, but when I got the list this morning, eight of those are lights that are shuttered. So there's, there were three lights that should be on that weren't, and Terry Colleen was faxed that information so that they can be repaired. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Building Commissioner Phil Sebel?
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, and members of council. I have a very brief report tonight, just to mention that our, the emphasis of our building department activity continues to be the maintenance of our major apartment projects and the maintenance of our yards around town insofar as cutting the grass and bushes go. We have started some, we have started a program of annual business maintenance inspections. We've been doing about a half dozen a week, and at that rate, we could do every business in the city of Richmond Heights within the year. But our plans are to continue this progress until the weather starts turning in the fall, and then step up the progress when other types of construction are slowing down. So that's, I'll be happy to answer questions. That's the extent of my report tonight.
We will move to Finance Director Mitch McHale.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, Mayor Roach. Two items that I'd like to update you on tonight. First of all, I told you I'd keep you in the loop about how we're doing as far as filling the vacant positions in the finance department. We have extended an offer to an individual for the APAR position. One of life's little surprises, I thought we were going to fill the payroll position first, but as it turns out, we found a suitable candidate for the other position earlier. So we've extended an offer, which has been accepted. She's giving notice to her employer now, and she should be starting with the department around August 1st. The other item that I have is related to just an update on the gap conversion. As you know, I mentioned earlier in the year that, that I requested an extension ahead of time, which was granted, and we have until the 30th of July to, or 31st of July to complete that. And as of now, the gap team has everything that they need to complete the work. There are a couple items that I am waiting to get from them that is basically like a narrative that I need to update. As of now, I don't anticipate there being any difficulties having this completed in a timely fashion. And shortly after that, I would expect that the auditor state will be back in to start on the audit of the 2014 financials. And I'll keep you updated as things go. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them now.
Great, thank you. We will move to Service Director Donald Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for participating in the end of our floor and each subject of the special conference. And we're looking to come out with the same, we'll be seeing a lot of those, not too far into the future, but I'm very happy to help you out to update the, to do the, to do the following, to do the, to do the problems. We have three new properties, kids working before us this summer, and they're working out very well. They actually really nice, they're really good at painting. When they first came, I started, I started painting the picnic tables over there, the park gear, and it hasn't stopped raining since, one day after another. So every time I try to get it started, it's going to rain, and the census has been, it's going to rain. But Chief says, we have all the people, they're going, and kind of keeping it moving and that. Service department also just put on staff two more summer jobs, and it's out, and they're already doing, and they're doing a lot of it. They finished the road repair that was done up on Sharnon Road just west of Richmond, on both sides of the street, and I was hoping for, and the range was totally perfect, and it was no water, standing water, and it was also, our chipper is down, I let that down on the website, and I lost it, we're all doing it this day, I've got them running, and still waiting for the machine to, the balance to check to come back, and then as soon as that, then we'll have that back on. And did, I was drawn from the city today, and by the way, management did miss some streets today, and.
Missed them yesterday on Monday.
Yesterday, but they still live here till the end of today, until we're notified. So I'm putting the test to, to miss the superintendent, the research, the, the, the suspects, to make sure it doesn't happen again. And today, my guys were downstairs with a lot of cleaning up, and they were, they got, all the mountains, you wouldn't believe it, you saw it, you've seen it the last few years, and we're down there now, we're not believing it, it happened.
Really?
Kids, it surprised me, I want to leave.
Really?
So I'm definitely making my guys feel this much, because they didn't miss it yet. So this is hope to the downstairs, so.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you very much.
Let's do a quick question. Can I ask if you could just send me some photos of the new trucks? I'll make sure, I'll post them up on the website.
All right, thank you. City Engineer Chris Courtney?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, Mayor Roach. I don't have any phone or work statements, if they have any questions, I can give those and we'll go play and answer.
Where's your dance?
North Carolina, no.
But I'm glad you're here, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Recreation Director Jessica Gift?
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, members of council. We made progress with development, Recreation Board, we started the second round of interviews with Mayor. Profs have been slightly delayed due to scheduling conflicts, but we're hopeful that selection will be able, and the board assembled very shortly. I would now say that Kaiba Arts and Cultural Grant Development, we've actually been approved for the eligibility check portion of the grant, which is the initial first step to the process of getting the grant. This allows us to formally apply for the special projects to, which should be such a $5,000 fund for cultural arts programs. The benefit is not only for next year, which is coming in 2015, but in 2015, then we can, we can then apply for the special grant one project, which is funding for up to $35,000. So we're hopeful that we can get approval for this, it's a third big project that we have to be pleased now. And finally, unfortunately, we had to cancel safety council next week, we did lack of time. We, I do not believe we'll be scheduling, we're only furthering it this summer, and obviously, we have to, we have to, we want to get it to a point where it's going to have a, 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 a report.
Thank you for your reports, you have any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Economic Development Director Crystal Best?
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, members of council. I just have two quick things. Today, I participated in the Eastside Greenway Steering Committee meeting, and the Eastside Greenway is a program designed to link communities on the east side of Cleveland with bike paths, walking paths, and basically access routes that are not motorized vehicles. There was a public meeting regarding the Eastside Greenway on Wednesday, July 22nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at John Carroll University, and I can get some more information to you about this, but I think this is a really wonderful opportunity. We are just finishing up the first phase of what the Eastside Greenway can mean for the city of Cleveland as far as having a means to get around Cleveland, not just for entertainment or recreation, but truly encourage people to ride their bikes and get out and use cars less. So please let people know and just take it as you're able at the public meeting, the last one for this phase, and I will get the information. Second thing is the Sharnon Road gas station project around Cleveland, we have a two big one here in Sharnon Road. We had an all-hands conference called today regarding where the project stands. At this point, the land bank has approved or authorized John Garhoo and partners to go ahead and prepare the analysis of ground field cleanup activity, which is known as the AFTAC, and is required by the Ohio EPA. He's also been authorized to create the medial action plan, again, required by the EPA. These two documents should be finished, he says, by July the 29th. They will be circulated to the Ohio EPA Department of Affairs there. Under the Ohio EPA regulation, those reports will be made available, I will make sure those reports are made available here at City Hall. A copy will be at the Department of Development downtown, and also online. So, and of course, mentioning here at the City Council meeting is also another way to make sure that the public is on notice, that these documents will be available for them to review them, the very first part of it, first week of audit. And then lastly, I'm very excited because the city of Richmond Heights is participating in the first, that I know of, the first real estate and business expo. And we are going to be hosting that with the help from the mall management, so I'm excited at Richmond Town Center. This is a really big opportunity for the city of Richmond Heights. It's going to be on August 26th, from 5 until 7:30. I have information here that I can hand out to you, and I can make available online. But it's a great first project of its kind that we had. We're going to be working with Gail Moncany of Flatland Realty and other realtors in the, in the city, and also with Cleveland Title, a gentleman named Chris Berger with Cleveland Title, he owns it. They, he first came to the city with his, and I said that sounds like a really great opportunity to market the city, to potential buyers, as well as realtors who are interested in selling in the city, mortgage lenders, banks, title companies, and just really anyone who's involved in the real estate market. I was, I was hoping that we could have a program that something akin to being 15 houses sold, and 15 for 15, and 15 for now, until the end of year, and I think that's a big, a big stretch at often, maybe we could do more, but please come, support the event, tell people about it. We really would love to see one of these people come through, and maybe break out sessions, and some light refreshments, and booths where people can walk around, see what's going on. So we're really excited, this is one of our first really big economic development activities, and I think it's going to be good. And that concludes my report.
Crystal, one of those signs go up at the education, at Sharnon, won't you?
Thank you. The signs will go up as soon as the AFTAC report is available for review here at City Hall. So right now, we've gotten some quotes for the cost of putting together the sign and getting it installed. We have to go ahead and have the sign designed and prepared so that it can, the sign is basically a design that is required by the Ohio EPA, there's no real creativity to it, so we just have to have it installed, I didn't even design it. And that will go in when the AFTAC is available for review, because what we don't want is to sign up and then have it be, well, not a lot, we want it to be in line with where the AFTAC is available for review, and when the subgrant's ready, it's done. We don't want to be in front of children.
Early, early August, because it'll be covered?
Yes. My wordy way of saying it.
I've never heard him speak so few words. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I would like to ask the Mayor to, I know he's a very busy man, but I think it's time that our Recreation Director gets a nameplate so that she can be properly identified at these meetings.
Yep. Patty, Patty Donleal in charge of this.
Who is?
Patty. Where is she at? Is she here?
I think you need to be identified like the rest of us.
I think it's, I hopefully it's on order.
Soon as they start shooting the arrows, they know where to go.
It was supposed to, it was supposed to have been on order a month ago, so.
I don't think the guy would have the assistant order to shoot that.
I think so, too.
You could do that. Okay, I think we'll take a note.
Get on it.
All right.
I have, I have a, no, I have a follow-on question. Yeah, you know, we've, we've had a couple, can we get an update on the Marathon Station at Richmond and Highland, what, what that plan is for updates?
The Marathon Station at Richmond Highland has received all of their architectural review board, planning, and zoning approvals. They are now in their construction drawing phase. I spoke to the architect today, as a matter of fact, to discuss various construction details and code issues with it. And I'm not, I can't honestly say that I know exactly when he's going to have construction drawings ready for submittal, but I would guess that it will be within the next couple, three weeks.
So, so the project's ongoing, ongoing?
The project won't break ground, I'm sure, before the snow flies. And I know also, I can tell you that they intend to build the new building in the, on the property behind the existing building, so that the existing building can stay open a little bit longer while the new building is under construction. So the demolition won't take place until the new building is somewhat along in its construction.
And we're, and we're okay with that, with the fire and the police department? That sounds dangerous to me, construction in, around gas pumps. Not, you know, working, I mean, customers coming, self-serving themselves, I don't know, is that any more dangerous than?
The, the construction of the building will be behind the existing building, and that area is not used right now.
Good answer.
We'll move on, there's no audience, so we'll move to old business, and we have none. So we'll move on to new business.
New business ordinance 59, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Richmond Heights, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015, to amend ordinance numbers 16, 2015, and 39, 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. O'Toole, any comment?
Yes, Madam President, this ordinance will move some monies around in the Service Department, and allocate some additional monies to the Street Construction Fund, so that our excellent road repair guys can do some of their work on the, in the city roads, is that right?
That is correct.
Very good, so.
Got it.
Very good. Our excellent, they do great work, so this is really a, this is reallocation of money that was already appropriated, so in said, I'll re-correct.
Second motion.
I will move the suspension, that's correct.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes, now I'm moving. Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen passes unanimously. Resolution number sixty, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Luntine, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for two vehicles for use by the Division of Police, and to authorize an agreement for installation of a vehicle equipment.
Mr. Luntine, would you like to comment?
Madam Chairman, just as the title says, we're giving the authorization to the mayor to go into an agreement to purchase two new police cars, and also to refurb, not refurbish, but to equip them with the necessary equipment that needs to be on these vehicles. And it's the recommendation of the Safety Committee of Council, per passage.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Second in motion.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole? Resolution sixty, two thousand fifteen passes unanimously. Resolution number sixty-one, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Alexander, first reading.
Mr. Alexander?
A resolution, amending resolution number forty-one, two thousand fifteen, repealing resolution number forty-two, two thousand fifteen, with respect to agreements with vendors for grass cutting and outdoor maintenance of private properties in the city.
Mr. Alexander, any comments?
This is, we originally had two vendors that, that bid to cut grass, the one never signed a contract with us, so all we're doing is moving the money from the, the one vendor that did sign to the first vendor with, cutting all the grass, and it was, and, and there.
Nothing to add, that's exactly the case.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole? Resolution sixty-one, two thousand fifteen passes unanimously. Resolution number sixty-two, two thousand fifteen, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution adopting the alternative tax budget information of the city of Richmond Heights, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand sixteen, submitting the same to the Budget Commission of Cuyahoga County, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. O'Toole, do you have?
Madam President, the county requires that we submit a preliminary budget at this time of year so they can begin to prepare their budget for next year, and this will ensure that we will be aligned to be able to collect the property taxes that, when it comes time for us to be fixed. We're declaring an emergency, so I will move this to suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Passage.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-two, two thousand fifteen passes unanimously.
Ordinance sixty-three, two thousand fifteen, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. An ordinance approving the codification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Richmond Heights, Ohio, and approving the updating of various sections of the Traffic and General Offenses Codes to comply with state law.
Mr. O'Toole, comments?
Yes. This is something that we do every year. Walter Drain Company analyzes what's going on in the state and brings our ordinances into compliance with what the state ordinances are, so this is really kind of a bookkeeping thing, and I move for suspension.
Second. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Move, passage.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole? Ordinance number sixty-three, twenty fifteen passes unanimously. Resolution number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Alexander, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Gardener Service Company for maintenance services for heating, ventilating, and air conditioning equipment.
Mr. Alexander?
This is just a renewal of our present service agreement. They've done it for years for us on the city properties. I move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes. Move for passage.
Second in motion.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole? Resolution sixty-four, twenty fifteen passes unanimously. Resolution number sixty-five, two thousand fifteen, introduced by Mayor Roach, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a utility agreement with Cuyahoga County.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'd, I'd recommend that we, that we hold this on first reading.
Thank you. Can we have other motions?
I would like to make a motion this evening, I'd like to make a motion for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Professional Business Systems for a maintenance agreement on a retriever, a piece of equipment that's used at the police department, not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine? Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Is there another motion on the floor?
I'd like to report a motion not to object to the issuance of a license for Sub-City or C, or, again, six hundred and one Richmond Road, to the private apartment commerce division of the.
Second. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
So, a final motion to, to executives, session to discuss pending litigation involving the city.
I'll second it.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Morgan?
O'Toole?
Yes.
All right, we are done.
Oh, yeah, mean the term.